All right. Who we have? I can't really see who's in the room with you, Councilor Letterman, so can you just, let us know who's in there? I wanted to see if anyone from the Finance Committee is in there with you?
Counselor Govan is here with me, Counselor Whitfield, as well as Ken Shea, John Payne, Kathy Breck, and Pat Burns.
Okay, so Zeta is on the Finance Committee.
Yes.
Okay. And then, um, just for viewers, can everyone else just go around the room and tell who they are? Amanda?
Amanda Pham, Executive Director of the Redevelopment Authority.
Thank you. Tim?
Tim Shan, Chief Development Officer, City of Springfield.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Commissioner Helen Colton Harris, the Department of Health and Human Services.
Thank you, Lindsey.
Lindsey Hackett, Deputy CFO.
Thank you, Lisa.
Lisa D'Souza, Deputy City Solicitor.
Bob?
Bob McCarron, Chairman of the Springfield Community Preservation Committee.
And then we have reporter Paul Tuthill joining us as well. And we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. It was supposed to take place in person, and then the rule changed, and I was glad because I just got out of work, so. We'll go ahead and we'll take the orders. So the May Law Department Expense Report. Is there something you need to share, Lisa?
Um, you should have a copy of the report from last month. Just trying to pull it up on my own screen, so I have it in front of me. I'm saying last month, but as you know, it's actually for the month of, the month of May. And we had two settlements of cases that month. One is the Stephen Viggo case. I apologize, my ability to do two things at once is limited here, so. I don't think, Counselor, I can share it, share it anyways, so just pull it up for my own edification. You should have it.
Did it come directly from you?
Do you have it, Counselor?
I don't know, looking. Did it come directly from you, Lisa, or did it come from?
It came from Pat.
Madam Chair, it's also in the agenda packet for the regular meeting.
So we settled two matters. One was the case of Vigno versus the City of Springfield. And one was Jonathan Ramos versus the City of Springfield. The Ramos case settled for three hundred and forty-five thousand. The Vigno case settled for three hundred and fifty thousand. We additionally had a four thousand dollar expense for outside counsel related to the Vigno matter. And a a three hundred and fourteen dollars, thirty cent expense for a deposition transcript. And in a different police misconduct case, it has not settled. So the total for the month was just slightly under seven hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, and can you tell what the total that's been spent?
Year to date, or since the?
I guess since the transfer.
Yes, it's a transfer. One second. One million, five hundred and ninety. I'm sorry, strike that. You have one million, five hundred, ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety-five cents. So remaining, after the expenses from May, from the five million originally appropriated is three million, four hundred and two thousand, one hundred and thirty-one dollars and five cents.
And how many cases we have in the pipe?
How many cases have we settled?
How many do we have in queue that we haven't settled? You have that number?
Not off the top of my head. It's, just give me one second. We've settled one, two. We've settled six, and we had originally presented twelve. All of the ones that we had settled were within that packet of cases that, within that original twelve. There is an additional case that's come in that dates back because of some complicated factors that I could discuss it at some point in executive session that we, we do intend to try to settle, so I'll be back at a different time to speak with you about that. But there's still six of the original twelve left in the queue.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any questions from councilors? All right, CNN. We will move right along with the agenda. Let me see. I don't know, for some reason I keep getting this expense report. Hold up. The May Revenue versus Expense Report. Pat, is Pat here?
Thank you. Tonight I'll be presenting the May Revenue versus Expenditure Report. As you can see, our budget is almost at a hundred percent on the revenue side, which is a factor of the settlement from Eversource, which was recorded in April. Just for comparison purposes, at this point last year, we were at ninety-four percent of the budget, so this year we're six percent ahead. And on the expense side, we're at eighty-six percent of the budget, and at this point last year, we were at eighty-five percent of the budget.
Any surprises, anything trending?
We, we are having an issue with our June Chapter Seventy payment. The state shorted us approximately ten point eight million dollars. We've been working with the Department of Revenue, and they're going to correct that and send us the money, but due to that, I'll have to accrue the, the revenue because it wasn't in the bank on June thirtieth, so. More fun for me.
Sorry, Pat. Sorry. Any questions from councilors? Comments? All right, moving right along. I don't know where I'm at, guys. The FY twenty-three SSYI grant increased to one million, nine hundred and fifty thousand? Anybody?
I can speak to that. I don't know who the phone number is. I thought someone from?
Bob McCarron, I think.
Oh, okay. So I can speak to this. Someone from the Police Department, maybe they're coming to the seven o'clock. I thought that they would be at both, but hopefully they'll be at the seven. So this is a grant increase for our annual SSYI grant. And it's additional funding that will continue the program through FY twenty-five. It's a multifaceted strategy for reducing youth violence. It is for high-risk youth. And Springfield's one of the fourteen municipalities to receive the funding. And I have a couple more details from, if you want to go into a couple more details of it.
So this is an increase from the SSYI grant we usually get?
Yeah, so it's an increase, but it's because it's a multi, it's a multi-year award, so this is really the FY twenty-three portion.
Is it, okay, so what's the normal, what was the FY twenty-two amount?
The same amount. It was level funded.
Okay, okay. All right. Any questions from councilors?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Are you recognizing me? Thank you. I just wanted to know who gets this grant? Is it spread out throughout the city agencies?
So there is a lead. ROKA is the lead agency on this grant. We do have partners. There's an outreach partner, which is ROKA and the Sheriff's Department. There's case management partners, there's education partners, Bay State Medical Center for Health Topics. There's occupational training and employment services, which is Mass Hire, and there's behavioral health services as well. So, so the partners are clinical and support options, Mass Hire, Bay State Medical Center, and Hampton County Sheriff's Department in partnership with the Springfield Police Department and ROKA.
Okay, thank you. And I'm just wondering if there's any data to show how the use of this money is benefiting the community? You might not have that.
Yeah, nothing I have now. I know Counselor Whitfield has held Finance Subcommittee meetings to discussion in SSYI and have brought in the lead agencies, and they've had data available, but I don't have it with me today.
I'm just wondering, Counselor Whitfield, if we could, I guess, look at that, because I know this grant has been around for a while now, and I'm sure there's some good numbers.
I have data on the Shannon Grant, not SSYI. I was actually going to bring ROKA in, but I did go meet with ROKA, and they actually do have really good data, so we can always request it, but I was hoping that they would even be invited to the meeting, so we can ask some specific questions like Counselor Govan has. So this item may be tabled until we can do that, because I have been planning to bring ROKA in anyway, and the rest of the partners, so. We could get the information that Counselor Govan is also requesting. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Thank you. Okay. Go ahead. I can't. I just can't really see who's talking, so just jump.
Still adapting to the hybrid model. Just a quick question on that SSYI money. For Lindsey, when is that usually dispersed to ROKA? I'm always in favor of us getting more data and more information. I just want to make sure, as it is the beginning of the fiscal year, that they're aware that the award is in, and to make sure that they will, because we won't meet again in a regular meeting until September, so we won't be able to approve that fund through until that time. Will that be okay?
Yeah, that's a great point. Let me see if there's anything about the reimbursement here. It is, the funding is appropriated to start as part of the state budget process, so with conference, well, Conference Committee budget is out. I heard the final budget's out, but I haven't seen anything about that yet, but anyway.
They were supposed to vote on it today, actually, at one. I don't know.
I want to say it's a quarterly reimbursement. I thought I saw that it was a quarterly reimbursement, but I don't have it here. Obviously, I would have found out the funding's in place sooner rather than later. But I don't have that information here.
Is there any way to get it by seven?
I can try to email Anthony. I don't know if he's available. Again, I, I was told someone from the Police Department was going to be here at seven, so I hope they still are. What exactly is the question you want answered?
Counselor Letterman?
Well, so I think the Counselor Govan's question is relative to the use of the funds and the, the data surrounding the organization that it's going to. And my question relative to that is, you know, again, I don't know what our, what our contract with them says about our disbursement of funds. If we table, which is not a problem for me if we're looking for that info, but we won't be able to vote on disbursement of the funds until our September meeting.
Will that be a problem? That's the question.
I'm going to ask him that. As far as the data Counselor Govan asked for, I'm, I won't have that by seven.
Yeah, no, 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 no. We'll have a meeting with ROKA.
Okay, so I'll ask the program lead, what are the repercussions if this isn't voted on until September, and I hope I hear back from him by seven, but I can't, I can't guarantee I will.
Okay, thank you. They should have been here.
They might be at the seven, so.
Okay, because this, this isn't the first time when it comes to grants that they get in the Police Department, or like Shannon, they weren't there, and I think they weren't there for other grants that came in. They don't come to the finance meeting, so if they want this to be expended in a fair amount of time, then they need to show up. Next item is Court Street and Main Street Transportation Construction Grant.
Yes, so this is a grant we received from the Mass Gaming Commission. It's a transportation grant, and it's for infrastructure improvements on Court and Main Street. And the purpose of the funding, it is intended to be a match for a Mass dot grant of six point five million. Wait, six point five? No, not six point five. It's going to be, it's going to be a match for a Mass dot, Mass Works grant. I believe it's four million will be that grant from them. So this project is going to be related to rebuilding, repaving, and related hardscape around Main Street and Court Street to make them more pedestrian-friendly. It's going to include pedestrian crossings, infrastructure and utility upgrades, water, gas, electric, sewer, streetscape signage. It's going to make it more friendly for specialty programming and event, a event infrastructure. It's going to reconfigure the pedestrian alley from State Street through Court Square, that alley there. And it is going to include street sidewalk and plaza paving, landscape lighting, and street furnishings.
Thank you. I love downtown, but we have a whole city. And I would like to see more grants written for Boston Road, for St. James Ave, for Bay Street, for State Street. We, it's always downtown. And we have a whole city that we need to focus on. That's going to be my comment, Tim. I know I've spoken to you about it before.
Yeah, the Mass Gaming Commission is strictly around the casino area, so just.
Okay, but it's always Main Street, Court Square, Stern Square. So we, we got to move this up the hill. We got to move writing these grants up the hill. That, that's what I would like to see. Counselor Hurst?
Yeah, just a quick question for Lindsey. You said it's strictly around the casino area. Is that what you're saying, that that's the only place in which we can expend these funds at? These are mitigation funds, right?
The Mass Gaming Commission grant program generally is surrounding the casino area, yes.
This says Court Street, Main Street Transportation Construction Grant. Doesn't say Gaming Commission.
This is a Mass Gaming Commission grant.
Okay.
Counselor?
No, I, I just, you know, I wonder if that's the way in which we're, you know, if those are the parameters, or if, or if that's just what it is that we're applying for. And, you know, if so, what else could we be applying for? I'm, I'm, I'm not against the beautification of, of downtown, but I'm also with Counselor Whitfield. I mean, we invest a lot of money downtown, and I'm sure there are some impacts as a result of the casino that go well beyond just downtown. And so if these are mitigation funds, I, I guess I'd love to see where it says that they can only be expended downtown by the casino. But maybe you can send those to me in the future. Be good to know. Thank you.
Or you can add that word into us once you find it. It, it can be in the near future, whenever you can find it, because a lot of times we just get information, but we don't have the laws or the rules behind it, and so not that I don't trust you, but I don't trust any one hundred percent. I like to read things for myself, and so if you could get that information for us, Lindsey, that'd be great.
Yeah, so when they open up the next round of grant funding, I'll, I'll be sure to send you those parameters of the grant.
All right, thank you.
So Whitfield?
Yes.
So, um, I guess a question I had, if these are mitigation on funds that the Gaming Commission expands, I wonder if other parts of the city might be able to benefit from them. I know this specifically says Court Square, Court Street and Main Street, but possibly in the future, because as we know, you know, there's a lot of keynote parlors, scratch tickets at every corner store. And I'm just wondering if we can figure out a way to do something like that with that money. And I just wanted to maybe remind you that we have, I know in Indian Orchard, we've been getting a lot of improvements, and I'm really happy about that, of course. And I do agree with you, Counselor Whitfield, that we do need to work on the whole city, especially, I think, in Mason Square. I know that a lot of people have been complaining, especially about the light situation up there. But thank you. That was just my comment.
Yeah. Thank you. Um, any other questions or comments? Okay. Burn JAG Grant, twenty-five thousand?
Yes, so this is a grant for the Police Department. It's a JAG Grant for Violent Crimes Initiative, and the funds are going to be used to reimburse the Springfield Police Department for overtime costs. They work in cooperation with this Mass State Police on this program.
Is there a specific area?
No.
Okay. Any questions from councilors? CNN, next item number six is FY twenty-three Local Consumer, Consumer Aid Grant for one hundred and thirteen thousand.
This is the grant that funds the Mayor's Office of Community, Consumer Information, one hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, one hundred and eight of which is towards salaries and wages. And then the small amount leftover goes towards OTPS within that department.
Any questions from council? I never use that department. I'm sorry, using that department. I reuse that department. Three one one. Any questions from councilors?
Counselor Whitfield, I'm just wondering, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm wondering if there's, because I remember I used to see commercials about the Consumer Information Office, or it might have been the other Consumer Protection Office. So I'm wondering if there might be some advertising that can be done for the community and the residents to be made more aware, like Counselor Whitfield, then she might use the office more. Thank you.
All right, well, that's a great suggestion. So hopefully, it'll be brought back. Was someone else? Counselor Hurst?
Yes, I just want to echo Counselor Govan's sentiments. I actually didn't know where to send folks. I had an idea there was an office, but I had no idea where to send them, and so I know other folks have more concerns outside of the one that I was able to address with my constituent in terms of where to go, or have more concerns and have no idea where to go. And so it would be nice if there was some sort of campaign that was done so that residents had a good idea as to where they go in the event that they need to access this department. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Is there anyone who can pass this information along to that office or the Mayor's Office to see if we can get some advertising done for?
I will email Millie and ask her what her advertising strategy is, and I'll ask her to direct any answers straight to you guys.
Thank you, Lindsey.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I just wanted to say, certainly support additional advertising for the office, but I want to commend Millie and her team. They do do an excellent job. I've had the opportunity over the years of referring many constituents to them, and she has some great numbers on her outreach, especially during COVID. I know pre-COVID, she did a lot of events, like at the senior centers and looking in different areas where vulnerable populations could be reached, who are often the victims of these types of crimes and these types of misrepresentations. So the more folks we can direct to Millie, the better, but I do want to say that in the occasions when I've had the opportunity to work with her, she's been very responsive and a great advocate for our residents.
What are these type of crimes and these type of things that you're talking about? Because while Millie may have been great for you, there's a bunch of constituents in the community that have no idea what Millie does. They have no idea where this office sits, and because you know, you know, and she's been great to you, everyone else, I mean, a lot of others don't. So what exactly is the focus point of this office since?
Sure. So I, I can't speak for Millie, but I met Millie when I was first elected. I went around and met with each department head. That's how I became more aware of Millie's department. And primarily, they work with individuals who are essentially the victims of like scams. So if you, that's what, you know, on the occasion that I've had the chance to refer residents, it's been folks who have been taken advantage of in, in the marketplace, basically. You know, businesses misrepresenting themselves or misrepresenting their products, and they work specifically through the Attorney General's Office. So it's actually a grant from the AG's office. Locally, they get referred to as the Mayor's Office of Consumer Affairs, but they have a direct plug and direct line to the Attorney General's Office, and there's versions of this in multiple communities throughout Springfield. I believe that the office actually serves greater Springfield, the way the grant is written, where the administrators of it, and it's housed here, but I believe she does have the opportunity to work with residents in other communities as well. So I think the more support we can provide that department, the better.
Yeah, the grant is wonderful. I just want advertisement, and, you know, we need to know exactly what's in the City Hall, because that's been a problem for years. Folks don't know what services, so I guess what Tim is putting together. Counselor Allen, maybe we could add, hopefully that's added into the pamphlet that he's putting together of city departments and what they offer. Thank you. Item number seven, Budget Transfer Within a Department, Capital Reserves to Property Acquisition for one million, four hundred thousand?
Yes, thank you, councilors. So, this is a budget transfer to, for funding that you were able to set aside last year, so thank you for that. And we've said that we would be back to move the money when we're ready, and we're ready at this point, and this is to move the funding, one point four of that, two point five million into an account to make it available to SRA for property acquisition. That was discussed in executive session a couple times.
Yes, we actually discussed it in an executive session today, and the Finance Committee is going to Finance and Economic Development Committee, a joint committee. We do support the transfer. The information was provided in executive session today, so we can't talk about it in public session because of the deal, right, Tim? Right, Amanda? Yeah, so.
Yes, Counselor, it, it's the details of the transaction that you can't discuss in public, but it is in preparation for an acquisition of Twenty-two Falcon Way by the SRA.
Okay, Twenty-two Falcon Way is that parking lot next to the Mass Mutual building that's being demolished, so. We did talk about it, and we support it. Any questions? All right. CNN, we'll go to the Transfer of Stabilization Reserves to Police Department for Professional Services. Or five hundred and fif, I'm sorry, five hundred and fifty thousand.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. This is a transfer from reserves of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars over to the Police Department Professional Services account. This is with the intent to fund two needs necessary of the settlement, the DOJ settlement, and I, Kathy, I believe Kathy Breck is here to discuss any any more information that you might have about that.
So. Available?
Does you want to join us at the table? That way they can hear you clearly.
Is there a question that somebody has?
So let me preface, can I preface by saying that it's a five hundred and fifty thousand, fifty thousand of which will be used to fund the IIU attorney, and five hundred thousand, which will intent, the intent to be used to fund the Compliance Evaluator, which they're currently in the process of reviewing right now.
Sure, so the IIU attorney, fifty thousand, is that, the, the contracted rate is fifty thousand, or is it, you need an additional fifty thousand for the contractor rate?
No, the fifty thousand dollars is the contract.
It's the contractor rate, and so five hundred thousand to the Compliance Evaluator is part of its salary and part of it for departmental needs?
No, the, the five hundred thousand dollars is probably a little more than will be needed, but it is a safe number, and that is strictly for the payments for the Compliance Evaluator services for year one of the settlement agreement.
So five hundred thousand dollars for the Compliance Evaluator, is that one person?
It could be up to, I, I think the Department of Justice notified the parties, the interested parties, as to. the parties, the interested parties as to, uh, who was going to be selected for the, uh, finalist interview on Thursday. And I believe that they would be for somewhere between, uh, two to three, uh, individuals, depending on what, um, um, what entity is selected, uh, by the parties.
And, but it's still a contractor rate. It's not someone who will work for the city?
No, they, they will not work for the city. They, uh, they will be working, um, uh, in conjunction with the city and the Department of Justice, uh, in the implementation of the settlement agreement.
Counselor Hurst?
Just a couple of questions. Um, I guess, number one, um, why do we have to entertain these two orders together? As they're, they're for two separate acts, right?
Although they're both part of the settlement agreement, uh, requirements, uh, and it simply just makes sense. We expect the, um, the compliance, uh, evaluator to begin by the, no later than the first of August. And, um, we are required, as part of the settlement agreement, to have the I-I-U attorney in place, uh, before, at the time that we begin that process. And so that's why we're doing it all at one time.
Got it. Um, so I, I mean, my frustrations are, are, are going to remain, uh, some of which you all have been made privy to, and, you know, I certainly have informed the City Council as well as the Mayor's Office. It, I mean, it's hard for me to support this, um, especially considering who the attorney is that we're getting ready to spend fifty thousand dollars on. It would seem to me that we would have followed a similar process as we followed with the compliance evaluator, where we actually got to vet the individual who is going to be providing us this service, which is so important, uh, which is what we did with the compliance evaluator. Uh, in addition, it would also seem to me that we would be able to give, uh, or at least allow the community to have input, uh, just to make sure there are some checks and balances. So I certainly know that you, you all are free, uh, to appoint who it is that you want, but from a transparency perspective, from a building trust perspective, from the individuals that I've talked to in the community who are aware of the work of Attorney Murphy, for me, this doesn't, uh, thi- this just doesn't look good, and it doesn't get us off to a good start, uh, considering, uh, the fact that, you know, Attorney Murphy has defended some high-profile cases and spent the bulk of his career defending the police. And so now he's going to be charged with investigating, uh, I-U complaints, or at least assisting in the investigation and making sure things are moving accordingly and claims are being processed. I, I, I just have a tough time understanding how we arrived at this point. And, you know, the fact that you all have lumped, lumped them together certainly is clever, but it, but it's problematic for me, because I would have supported, uh, the process and the compliance evaluator portion of it, which is the, the large portion of it. But I could have never suppo- I could never support, uh, this particular individual, um, attempting to assist in the reform of our police department, uh, serving as our I-U attorney. So, um, this is a, you know, conversation I'm having with you all. I'll have it with the entire body, uh, when it comes time for our council meeting, but it just seems to me that we ought to be able to do better, uh, and, you know, I, I, I mean, we're just, just not off to a great start. So, that being said, Madam Chair, um, that's all I have at the moment.
And you, Counselor?
I, I would like, I would like to note, uh, because I, I do think that it has to be, uh, stated. Attorney Murphy is a highly respected, uh, member of the bar, uh, in this community and has been for decades. And quite frankly, uh, has been basically a civil practitioner much more than a criminal practitioner over that period of time. Uh, he is a, a person of high character and integrity, and, and I do take some affront when there are suggestions or inferences or implications that he is less than that. So I would state that for the record.
And, and if I could just rebut, Madam Chair, uh, I, I appreciate that, um, Judge, but I, I think you might be out of touch with what the community, uh, looks at this as. And so when the community looks at it, they see an obvious problem, which ultimately can be an inherent conflict of interest. He is going to be processing potentially claims of officers who he's defended, who remain on the force, and that in and of itself doesn't look good. Um, and, you know, I certainly respect what it is that you say, but I, I just, I just can't relate. And when there are so many other attorneys out there, like, we're, we're not even trying. We're not even trying, and the community sees it and knows it. And it would just be better if we just made an effort to be genuine in the reform that we're trying to put forward. It, it would look better for everybody in the administration. With all due respect, John, I mean, I, I, I don't get it. And at some point in time, my hope is that the Department of Justice ultimately comes in and says, "This is, this is ridiculous. Like, we can't start off this way. It looks bad for you all, it looks bad for us, it looks bad for the DOJ." And when I have more conversations with them regarding this issue, I'm going to say the same thing. So, you know, I, I would encourage my colleagues not to vote for this, uh, until there is a change in who it is that they have representing the I-U department. If you want to have, if we want to have control as a body, this is how we do. And, you know, unfortunately, times like now necessitate us having to have control, because it is, it's a problem.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, I, one moment, Counselor Govan, I see your hand. Um, my question is, what was the selection process? Were there any other candidates in the pot? Um, or did we say this is the best person for the job, and let's just go for the white Irish guy that's from Wilbraham? Was there anyone high on the bar exam, on the bar level, that might be a person of color, um, that may be from Springfield? I just want to know what the selection process is.
Selection process is, we selected someone that we thought could do the job, was experienced and professional, and I resent the other comments that you've made, Counselor.
No, you can resent it, you can re- you can re- you can resent it, sir. I, I, you know, I can accept that. But I'm just asking you a question. I'm asking a question that I want to know the answer to.
I've answered your question, Counselor.
Okay, well, thank you very much for answering it, but I can still ask what I want to ask, and I will, because.
And I will.
And thank you. Thank you for your response, but my question was, what it was, is there any lawyers of color in the city of Springfield that was even considered?
We considered one individual, a person of experience, and that's who we selected.
And that's how it's always been, and it, it hasn't worked out for my community very well over time, because folks like you, folks like you can select who you want to bring in. It's not an equitable stance. It doesn't involve equity, because it's just who you thought was best for the community, but it doesn't represent who the community thinks is best for the community. And so that's not equitable, and it's not a fair process. And I understand that you don't like what I'm saying, but I'm going to speak the truth as I see it, because I'm a person of color that have had people in their family be up by and killed, killed, killed by police officers in my family, my godson, Delana Walker Jr., and nothing happened to the police officer. And so while you're offended, I'm still hurt. I'm still hurt. And so maybe you can understand it from that standpoint, and maybe you can't. But I'm going to ask the questions that I want to know the answers to, and thank you for answering, Counselor Govan.
Thank you, Chairwoman. So you asked one of my questions, and, uh, Judge, you answered it. What was the selection process? So essentially, you guys just chose, um, Attorney Murphy for this job. So I'm wondering, and I think, uh, Counselor Ju- uh, Hurst asked the question, if, uh, the DOJ is aware of what the selection process was?
Yes.
They are aware of it?
Yes.
Okay.
Any, any other questions from councilors?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, Counselor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Judge, can you just confirm for me, so, uh, there's two positions, the monitor and then this position that's being discussed right now?
Yes.
And the monitor.
Well, the monitor is a position.
Right, it's a, it's a contract with a group of individuals. I understand that. Explain to me more again about this position and what the responsibilities of this position will be?
Well.
Or this contract. It's a fifty thousand dollar contract, but it's with an individual.
It's with an individual. Um, it is designed as part of the settlement agreement to have, uh, among the rules that are being modified, changed, adopted, involve the I-U department and a method of, uh, of attempting to, um, get it to operate in a manner that, uh, both, uh, the DOJ and the city and the police department would like to, uh, uh, see it run. And one of the requirements that the Department of Justice, uh, wanted to, uh, implement was the position of an I-U attorney whose responsibility would be to oversee, uh, the cases as they came in, making sure that the proper decision is being made as to those matters that, uh, are going to be, uh, submitted, uh, to the superintendent and to the police commission and to the other supervisors, uh, to take the necessary and appropriate disciplinary action when there is, uh, a complaint that is, um, found to be sustained and, uh, needs to be further investigated.
So this individual would advise the, the leadership of the I-U relative to what cases they choose to push forward to the police commission?
Well, I don't think that they'll make that determination. I think that they're going to work with the officers in the I-U to make sure that the matter is being properly investigated, uh, and if there are issues, to determine, uh, how to get to the point of what cases are going to be moved on to the supervisors, to the superintendent, and then to the commission, that that is done in an appropriate manner.
In compliance with the.
The Department of Justice settlement.
Settlement agreement consent decree. So the reason it needs to be an attorney is that it needs to be somebody who can interpret the consent decree with the commitments that have been made by I-U?
Well, also, uh, also someone that understands the distinction, uh, between the issues where you're de- you're de- you're dealing specifically with departmental charges and, uh, those issues where you might be not only dealing with a, a issue of a departmental charge, but there may be something that would require further investigation that could result in a criminal activity, so that, um, those are not being lost in the process of the investigation.
And how was the selection made of who to award the contract to? What was the process that, that happened? Because I wasn't clear on that. I'm sorry if you've already answered the question.
We were, um, we were looking for someone. Uh, Attorney Murphy has been involved, uh, with, uh, uh, different aspects of, in, in, um, in police matters. Uh, he is an experienced attorney, uh, and, uh, he expressed some interest, and we decided, uh, as a means of getting that I-U attorney in place so that we can begin this, uh, uh, settlement agreement, uh, as I say, hopefully by the end of this month or by the first of August, uh, up and running right away.
So no other bidders on the contract were so, were entertained?
No.
How was it advertised?
I don't believe it was.
How did he know that the contract was up for award?
Well, I think, uh, i- i- if you followed, uh, any of the aspects of the settlement agreement, uh, and the negotiations, you knew there was going to be an I-U attorney, and I believe he became aware of that and expressed some interest.
Wha- what other circumstances exist where we're able to make awards of contracts without advertising?
Well, uh, I don't know. This is a, this is part of a, um, part of the Department of Justice, uh, the City of Springfield Settlement Agreement, and, um, it's kind of a unique situation, and that's where we are.
I could also add, Kathy Breck, um, Department.
Kathy, are you able to move over to the.
Oh, sure, sure, sure. Sorry.
You're looking out your way.
Contracts with attorneys are not required to be publicly advertised. It's not part of the bid process. Uh, like, um, there are several exceptions to the bid process when things have to be advertised and why not? And it's, in hiring things like engineers, attorneys, and things of that nature, it does, it does not require it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So usually, someone can just walk up, say, "I express interest in this contract, this job." If it's not, have to go through the bid process, and we can say, "All right, you're the only one that came forward, so you're, you're it." Like, that, is that how it works in the city of Springfield? Uh, Counselor Hurst?
It could work that way in any city.
Well, and I'm talking about the city of Springfield right now, because that's who I am fiduciary, I have the fiduciary responsibility to and to my constituents. So I'm just talking about the city of Springfield, because if that's how it works, then, you know, we probably got a lot of folks that may not, probably should be in their position, and probably are, if that's how it works. Counselor Hurst?
I, it, just in listening to the back and forth by Counselor Letterman, as well as yourself, Counselor Whitfield, and then the questions by Counselor Govan, I just would, um, you know, I, I, for me, this is indefensible. And so the fact that, uh, folks and the administration, i- it, especially folks at the highest level, feel that this is defensible, uh, is, speaks to the culture and the systems that are in place that we're trying to combat. And I know that they are not going to get it. I understand that. Uh, they haven't for a long time. We, as a body, must get it and use this as an opportunity to send a message. And if we don't, then my hope, to your point, Counselor Govan, is that the DOJ will. And I've had conversations, uh, with Rachel Rollins, and I, I will also have a conversation later on this week with another individual from, um, the DOJ, uh, out of the Springfield office. It's, it's wrong, and, um, they will be culpable as well, the DOJ, if they allow for things like this to happen, because otherwise, we, what good is a consent decree?
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Govan?
Thank you, uh, Chairwoman. Um, and, and Judge Payne, I don't believe that neither, uh, Counselor Hurst or Whitfield said anything that, you know, Attorney Murphy is not a good attorney. And I don't think anybody is doubting that. The process in which the decision was made is what's in question. And I agree with Counselor Hurst, I agree with Counselor, uh, Whitfield. Um, a- and the process just looks really shady, for, for lack of a better word. So, um, I wish, like Counselor Hurst said, that these were two separate issues that we could, you know, tackle, because I agree, we do need the compliance evaluator. I think the process for which, um, that decision is being made was very transparent. It was advertised, it was talked about, everyone knew about it. No one really knows exactly what the consent decree is right now. I'm hoping that, you know, moving forward, we can educate our community about that. It's a really long document that probably only an attorney can understand. However, in this situation, the I-I-U attorney being chosen like this really, um, it really scares me, honestly. Um, so, you know, to, to Counselor Hurst's point, I'm, I'm not going to be able to say yes to this item, because they're together. Um, Counselor Letterman, uh, President, um, Council President. So that's my, um, comments, and I'm hoping, you know, because historically in this city, this is the way things have been done, you know? Um, and this is why we have a consent decree now, because of our prior act. So I'm hoping that we will be able to change, um, where we're going in this. And I think this may be a great place to start for us to move forward in a different way. So, um, having said that, I'm, I'm not going to be able to, um, approve, uh, and, and submit my vote in, in agreement to this question. So thank you. Thank you, uh, Chairwoman.
Thank you, Counselor, um, Govan. Is there any other comments or questions about the transfer? All right. Seeing none, we will move on to the next item. Um, it's a, thank you. The Mass in Motion Grant Award for one-hundred-and-ten-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars.
Good evening, councilors. How is everyone? This is the Mass in Motion Grant, and Mass in Motion is our health and wellness grant. We have had this, uh, grant for the last, uh, five years. We had to reapply this year, and I'm proud to say we were successful. And so we will be continuing to do our health and wellness community work in the city of Springfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for a commissioner on this grant? All right, seeing none. Um, the next item is the Mass Call Three Grant for three-hundred-and-thirty-seven-thousand-five-hundred dollars.
It is I, once again, and Mass Call Three Grant is a grant, uh, that we have with the cities of Chicobee and Hoyoke. Springfield is the lead entity. Uh, this grant is to develop a strategy. This grant is to develop, uh, strategies, uh, to intervene in substance use disorders with adolescents. We work with the school districts in Springfield, Holyoke and Chickaby. And all superintendents are on board with this very important initiative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions on the Mass Call Three Grant? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to a bond order for the implementation of a new CAD-RMS system for public safety. Bond authorization.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. This is phase two of the CAD and RMS upgrade implementation. We came to you back before COVID for the bond for the consultant and said we would be back when we were ready to move forward with the project after a consultant, I mean, after, um, a vendor was chosen, a vendor was chosen, Motorola. So this is the cost to move forward with the implementation of a new, um, computer-aided dispatch and records management system for the public safety.
And I'm sorry, that amount is 3,383,000 in bond. Is that correct?
Uh, let me see here.
I'm just looking at.
Yes, 3.383 million.
Okay. And just looking at, um, the budget, it's for the Motorola Solutions contract for 1.7 million, the, um, NARC channel update, the radios and CAD-RMS hardware for a million?
That's correct.
Okay. Do you know what the CAD-RMS hardware is?
Yeah, so it's going to include, um, upgrades to the Tough Books in, um, the Cruisers. It's going to be some hardware. We're going to need new consoles for dispatch. It's going to include a couple of things needed just for the radio channels for fire and dispatch. I'm collecting a list of, of things and I, um, just estimated the cost to be a million. If it's less, it's less, but I didn't want to shortchange, um, what we're going to need for hardware costs.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from councilors? All right, seeing none, we will go to our final item, which is the Community Preservation Committee FY23 Budget.
Oh. Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
All right, so I'm Bob McCarroll, 96 Elliott Street, Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. And the committee has sent its, uh, draft budget to the City Council for review for fiscal '23. We are projecting, uh, approximately 1,009, um, to come in through the tax levy. Based on that, we think that we're going to be getting about 646,000 dollars from the Department of Revenue's annual distribution. There's going to be about 20,000 of interest. So we're anticipating that, uh, total CPA revenue, um, in fiscal '23 will be 2,628,000. As you know, the state law requires that we set aside 10% of our budget for community housing, historic resources and open space slash recreation. So we'll be setting aside 262,800 in each one of those categories. And we are, um, having a, an administrative budget of 69,850, which leaves, uh, 1,769,750 in unallocated reserves that can go for any one of the three eligible activities.
Thank you, Bob, for explaining that. Are there any questions for Bob? All right, seeing none. That's our final item. So, see you all in about a half an hour.
Madam Chair.
Sorry.
FYI, Madam Chair, for the councilors that are online, we do have 6:30 public speak-out. So Brendan and Hesey are going to log us into the public speak-out link. And then, and we do have some folks in person that are speaking out as well.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Council President.
We got it, the, the next link that was sent this afternoon.
Okay, thank you for that update.
Thank you.
All right, bye-bye.